Good idea.
No worries. Thank you for joining us this evening. Albany City Council Meeting, Wednesday, August 27th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I will now call the meeting to order. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Counselor Thompson?
Here.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee? Counselor Van Dremelin and Newton are excused. And Mayor Johnson?
Here. Next on tonight's agenda is an option of the consent calendar. Counselors, do you have anything?
I have a correction, sir. I'd like to pull Item B four correction.
Okay, thank you. Counselor would like to finish the rest of it? Make a motion to finish with the change? We'll come back to it.
We'll move to approve the rest of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, Counselor.
In the consent agenda, Item B two, correction to the minutes is requested from August 13th. During Counselor Newton's business from the council, it's noted in the minutes that she made a motion and it was not seconded. This is not accurate. I want to open a discussion, is what she said. Additionally, she said, if there is support, I would like to make a motion. She did not actually make the motion. I very specifically asked, point of order, do we have a motion on the floor? Counselor Newton replied, I am allowing for discussion and then we'll make a motion. A motion was not made by Counselor Newton. Counselor Van Dremelin then proceeded with the next motion that was listed. And I'd like the minutes corrected to reflect this, please.
We have to vote on that? Fine, thank you.
We'll make that correction.
Thank you, Counselor. Next is presentations. Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments, 2024 Annual Reports. Executive Director Ryan Vogt, pages 27 to 40 in your packet. Hello, Ryan.
Much for having us. I'm Ryan Vogt. I'm the Executive Director for Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments and for Community Services Consortium. I've brought with me today Kayla Hatley, the Agency Director for Community Services Consortium. And I'm just thrilled to come and have a bit of a conversation with you. It seems like our periods in between these discussions is pretty long, but I'm always happy to come and chat with you. So before we get into the report that you have and a couple of other bullet points I'd like to share, I'd like Kayla to have an opportunity to introduce herself and her role.
As Ryan mentioned, my name is Kayla Hatley. I'm the Agency Director for Community Services Consortium. Previously to that role, I was the Deputy Director there, so I'm very excited to have spent the last almost year working side by side with Ryan at this joint partnership. And prior to my time at CSC, I actually was also working at the Council of Governments within their program supervision. So I've had the opportunity to see both sides of those agencies, so very happy to be here.
Good to meet you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So Counsel, you all have a packet of information related to both of the organizations. The one packet, or one chunk of information, is the annual report for the Cascades West Council of Governments. And I like to provide this every year at the member agency level to give you a sense of what the footprint is of the Council of Governments in the area here. One of our board members likes to regularly refer to us as a friendly octopus because we've got our tentacles, if you will, and so many different things. And I like to not just talk about the various things that we do as an organization across the region, but give you a sense of really how we exist within your backyard. And so that's there. The other thing that we've provided for you today is the Community Services Consortium Impact Report. This is a regional reflection because we're not currently breaking it down at the smaller geographic areas yet, but it's a regional representation of what the agency does in a similar vein, the number of people that we're helping, the types of programs that we administer, how it is that we are making an impact in the region. And I want to be clear about framing it that way because as you take a look at these, these reports are a little bit stale. We're in August already, but the services that we deliver are the same. But the reason why I want to point out, as you look through that, there is a substantial amount of similarities and overlap between some of the services that is provided by Community Services Consortium and some of the services that are provided by Cascades West Council of Governments. That is particularly important for low-income seniors. That is where we see the greatest level of overlap. Low-income seniors and houses with food instability particularly are those places where both organizations are kind of, have their pants rolled all the way up and they're knee-deep and trying to serve the needs of the community related to that. And the reason why I point that out is, I know we talked about this last time, but it has been a minute, is that it is because of these overlaps that over the last, particularly over the last five years, we've been working very closely together, the two organizations, to see how we can render services more efficiently and effectively to the people who need them, especially those people who need services from more than one agency. Trying to create kind of a no-wrong door, if you will, so that somebody doesn't come in, apply for one program, then get sent two desks over to apply for another program, and then get sent halfway down the street to meet with somebody else to apply for yet another program. So we're not there yet, but the vision around somebody coming in and our staff having a good understanding of the full spectrum of services that are provided across both organizations. So at the very least, when somebody comes in and applies and identifies a couple of vulnerabilities, we can do a warm handoff and say, wait a minute, let's go talk to this person over here because you may be eligible for some additional services. So it is in that kind of vein that the Boards of Commissioners for both organizations decided to really emphasize the movement towards a shared partnership, which puts me in the role of providing direction over both organizations. So what you're going to expect out of us over these next couple of years is continued movement in the direction of removing barriers for the most vulnerable citizens in the region to be able to get served more efficiently and more effectively. That also includes us making administrative movement that allows us to free up more money and more resources to be able to be attended to the consumers. So for instance, when we began this journey a couple of years ago, both agencies had a human resources team that had about three people apiece. Well, a three-person team is pretty ineffective at the point in time somebody takes a vacation. But one team of six or one team of seven is much more efficient to provide services across both agencies. So we're continuing to do a number of those things. So enough about that. You've taken a look at the report from, I'm going to talk about just a couple of quick things on the Council of Government side and turn it over to Kayla to talk about some of our footprint in Community Services Consortium and then be available for questions. And we've got four whole minutes left. So I mentioned food instability transcends both organizations. We have the Lynn Benton Food Chair over in Community Services Consortium, and we have Meals on Wheels Program over at Council of Governments, and we have a couple of smaller programs within both of those entities. The reason why I'm mentioning food insecurity today is because food insecurity in our region continues to grow exponentially. Also because of some decisions that have been made by the federal legislature and by the local state legislature, what we are seeing is reduced resources available for food security in our region. Specifically, some of those decisions that have been made about additional requirements for continuation of Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, and some of the Medicaid impacts that we anticipate rolling out over the next couple of years, what we anticipate seeing is people navigating away from some of those traditional support systems that help them with things like food and having to rely more heavily on systems like ours. So that will be a paramount concern later on in the community. And of course, the mayor sits on the board for the Council of Governments and is really aware of those conversations. And so we will bring information to you as that unfolds about what those pressing needs are for us. And then I'm going to pause and just hand it over to Kayla.
Okay. So for Community Services Consortium, we're the community action agency for Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. And so specifically within Albany, within Lynn County, some programs that are of note for you all is we have a utility assistance program. And within the first two quarters of the year so far, and for Albany residents, we've utilized, or excuse me, in this program, we've spent a total of $1.4 million on assisting clients in the first two quarters of the year. We're working in conjunction also with city staff because we understand the water assistance program through the city, there's a desire from council to have categorical eligibility for individuals to receive that service. And so we're working with them on how we can administer that program and achieve that categorical eligibility for them as well. And then additionally, just another point of note for the services that we have, July 1st of '24 through June 30th of '25, in Albany alone, we utilize, or we helped serve 336 Albany households with rental assistance. Seventy-four of those households were rehoused, and 232 of those were provided with eviction prevention services. And then since the beginning of this fiscal year alone, we've assisted 22 households that were at risk of eviction and three individuals who were homeless and were rehoused. So we've got a pretty great stretch here in Albany for impact and continue to see those needs rise.
Counsel, any questions?
Oh, a comment. I'm glad to see the CSC information included in the report. I had forgotten that you were working together. That's ridiculous, but I'd had. I'm very familiar with CSC. I go to meetings there once a month, and so I know about the programs. And I'm glad to see that in a report like this, it's more visible to the community. And the cross-pollination that's going on between the two agencies is overdue probably and really welcome. I'm glad to see that. Good use of all of our resources.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, thank you.
And I do appreciate the work that's been going on. I know you're streamlining efficiencies and making things more better, excuse me, work better. And so I'd like to, I'd love to see the progress, and it's finally great to meet you. I was not as available when you first started, so just keep up the good work, and if you need anything from me, let me know. My population is seniors, and so it's really important for me that these programs are a success going forward and always. Thank you.
Just going to say, I appreciate being, thinking in the future. Like you already got some plans in place for things, so I really like that. Having those contingency plans. Thank you for your work.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having us. Appreciate it. Have a wonderful night.
You too. Next up is Albany Youth Orchestra, Ty Vosler Ship, pages 42 to 47 in your packet.
Hey, thank you for having us tonight, everyone. I am Ty Vosler Ship, and I have a presentation here to share with you. I think everybody did get it. There's that. Okay, so tonight I have with me here our Board President Lindsay and one of our instructors, Tiger DeBolt. It's Lindsay Lancaster, Tiger DeBolt. They've joined me tonight. I wanted to come down, and when I found out that Mayor Johnson didn't know that we've been in the area for almost 20 years, I decided it was time to come and introduce us. So that's what the presentation here is. We were founded in 2007 by a group of parents who noticed that their, the Strings Program no longer existed in our school district as of, I believe, the eighties. And so they started this with the goal of being absorbed by the school, but that didn't work out, hasn't worked out. So we are filling that gap by offering classes on school campuses. We're in South Shore Elementary, Lafayette, North Albany Elementary, Oak Grove Elementary. I think that's it right now, and we're working on a couple more. We're also working on a middle school. So the introduction page here, our mission is again to focus on equitable access to quality orchestra education for students or for youth in the area. And so we focus on Title I or Title IX or both schools first. We've been in South Shore for almost 13 years, I believe, and we've provided free classes to them for the majority of that time. And when they weren't free, it was 75% off tuition. So they've always been very low cost, and we have about 40 kids that participate every year across several classes. So we have, we really enjoy that group. So this is just a little bit about our demographic, low-income families, underserved communities, my, sorry. And students grades three through 12. With that information again, we offer classes, levels one through three, which is generally third grade through fifth or sixth grade. I was, yeah. I didn't know. I thought I shared it. Sorry. It's my first time, guys.
It's okay.
Sorry about that. You'll, it'll all make sense in a minute. Our junior orchestra is usually middle-school-aged children, and chamber orchestra is our high school group. Give me just a second. I forgot what page I'm on.
There we go.
It's up there now? Okay. Okay, that's what was supposed to happen originally. Okay, so we teach levels one through three, junior and chamber orchestra. That is violin, viola, viola, cello. Sometimes we have some bass players there, a little less common. Tiger over there is actually teaching a bass class this year, so we're all pretty excited about that. We offer piano and guitar as well. Usually those classes are at our Music Center on Pacific Boulevard, next door to Browsers. The levels one through, one and two are at schools, and the rest are also at our Music Center. Okay. So why we do this? Research has shown in the last decades that music education for youth specifically has incredible social-emotional benefits, cognitive development, and the sense of belonging, finding a community and people to connect with. And that kind of ties into the personal experience of it. You know, I didn't have access to orchestra music education as a kid. I had wanted to play the violin since I was five, and actually AYO has given me that opportunity as well. Parents can't afford lessons in a lot of these schools that we go, we are in, so that's another reason that we are here, is to provide as low cost as possible. Not in the slideshow, but I just, I remembered that our operating budget is around $120,000. I don't do the budget side of things, but it's around there, and we, 96% of that goes to paying our teachers. So with the other 3% to 4%, we try to hire admin, but mostly it just covers basic expenses. So I keep jumping back and forth, I apologize. Another reason, other reasons that we do it are, is that it increases our options, our youth's options for how to express themselves, preventing them or at least encouraging them to take a healthy path rather than any of the other possible options. And that, so that's a big part of it as well. We've been focusing a lot more on community building in these recent months, so the community of music is incredible. I start talking music with someone and it just, you go forever. You know, you don't know what time it is. And I see the same thing in our kids. I have actually taken classes with some of our students, and these kids are just incredible. They light up, they become some other kind of kid. So that's, that's a huge part of why we do it. Sorry, there we go. Now, the how we do it is private donations, business sponsorships, grants, tuition, rental fees, and volunteers. We are always looking for donations, volunteers, board members, because this year, this in our budget is just enough to hire, have one office staff, which is just enough to keep us afloat, but not enough to ensure that we can grow enough to sustain ourselves. So that's our focus this year, is finding funding to make sure that we can have two admin people, which would be somebody focused on fundraising and community outreach, and then someone doing daily operations. Which is my next slide, what we need. We're looking for specifically for our board, someone who is in the marketing profession, a lawyer, and longtime musicians in general. But these are not, we're not only accepting these people, we really just want to connect with anyone who has the heart for music and has the heart for youth in our community. We are happy to have our students perform at events. We were, we were down at the farmer's market, we've worked with the Carnegie Library and had a little performance down there last weekend. That was really fun. We want more of those. We do retirement homes. I like to joke that that's our circuit, but that really is our audience. You know, just seeing the faces of these residents light up when our kids play, it's really magical to me and creates the bridge between our youth and our elderly, which I think is a beautiful thing. We're always needing people who can do fundraising and assist in any way there, and really, I'm just looking for those new connections. Just people who have that heart, like I said. I think that is it right there.
Counselors, do we have any questions or comments for Counselor McGee?
I have a question. Thank you so much. This sounds wonderful. What is the current board makeup right now? Because it looks like you have some gaps that you're trying to fill.
Yeah, right now, we have several longtime board members, and everybody, they don't, we have an accountant, we have, it's mostly parents and people who have been involved in some way, which is wonderful because everybody is so committed. You know, we, we do the labor on our building, we do everything. So we're just specifically looking for these, the marketing, someone in marketing, a lawyer, and longtime musicians, because we don't, we just don't have those things, you know? And a lot of our board doesn't really have the time that we need to be able to do the growth. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Thank you. Thank you for your question.
I just wanted to say that I didn't get an invite to the concert, so please make sure that we have the schedule.
Yes, yes. Oh, right, yeah. Don't even get me started on our concert this year. Okay, it was my very first one ever.
So, but all in seriousness, I think giving that information out on your social media, I think it gives people the opportunity to come and witness and participate in those events.
Absolutely.
So yeah, feel free to send me a text message, your calendar, whatever it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we already have them both scheduled, so I will absolutely send out that information. That's, that's what we're working on.
Thank you. Counselors, anything else?
I didn't know this was going on for the last 20 years. Where have I been?
No, I mean, where have we been? So that's why I'm here. And yeah, I couldn't believe it either.
Well, it's wonderful. It's wonderful. I can think of so many possibilities for performances.
I've got big ideas, and so now I need the assistance to get the money to make that happen, you know? It's, we're all in that boat right now, right? So I think we can all work together to get all of our different projects and things that we care about within our community to happen. But it does require those overlapping relationships.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ty.
It was great.
Next on tonight's agenda is Appalled, Association of People Against Lethal Drugs. Lydia Karyakin, it's a verbal presentation. Thank you, Lydia.
All right. Good evening. My name is Lydia. I am with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit called Appalled, the Association of People Against Lethal Drugs. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak with you today. For me, this isn't just an organizational mission, it's deeply, deeply personal. In 2021, my brother Luke lost his life to a counterfeit pill laced with a lethal dose of fentanyl. He was young, he was loved, and he had so much life ahead of him. One pill stole all of that. I am here today to be Luke's voice. I am here because I don't want another family to experience the kind of loss that mine has endured. Appalled was created because too many families, just like mine, have had their lives changed forever by this crisis. But appalled is more than just grief. We are action, we are hope, and we stand on one promise, to leave no one behind. Our mission statement is this, to empower and engage the public in working toward change, raising awareness and collaborating efforts to combat the synthetic drug crisis. And while fentanyl has become the deadliest threat, claiming lives at alarming rates, our mission is not just about fentanyl, it's about the broader synthetic drug crisis that is destroying lives and communities. Every life matters, and Appalled exists to protect them. So how do we turn this mission into action? For me, there are three areas where I want to see real change. Number one, education in schools. Our children and teens need to know the truth. Education is prevention, they don't need skills. Education is prevention. They don't need scare tactics. They need facts, real life stories, and tools to make informed choices. If Luke had truly understood the dangers of counterfeit pills, maybe things would be different. I don't want any student left in the dark. Number two, Narcan education. Narcan is a life-saving tool. It doesn't solve the drug crisis, but it can reverse an overdose in the moment when everything hangs in the balance. Everyone, especially young, young people should know what Narcan is, how it works, and how to use it. Overdoses don't just happen somewhere else. They can happen in our schools, in our neighborhoods, in our families. Number three, Narcan access. Narcan should be everywhere. We don't question having fire extinguishers, defibrillators, or first aid kits in public spaces. Why should Narcan be any different? Schools, community centers, sports facilities, libraries, every place where young people gather should have Narcan, Narcan on hand. If we train people in CPR, we can train them in overdose reversal. But here's the truth. Appalled cannot do this alone. No single person or group can solve this crisis. It takes all of us, parents, teachers, school boards, lawmakers, healthcare providers, and neighbors working together. So here's what I ask of you today. Start the conversations. Talk to your kids, your siblings, your friends. One honest conversation could save a life. Push for Narcan in schools. Ask your local leaders, school boards, why it isn't already there. Advocate until it is. Support Appalled's mission. Partner with us. Volunteer. Share our mission. Amplify our voices. The more people who join, the stronger we become. Show compassion. Addiction and overdose affect every community. Leaving no one behind means standing with families, supporting those in recovery, and remembering that every single life matters. And speaking of action, I want to give you a very specific opportunity to get involved. Friday, September 5th, Appalled will be holding a community outreach event at the Albany Public Library from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. This will be a time to learn, connect, and take steps together to protect our community. I want to personally invite each and every one of you to join us. Together, we can make a difference. Together, we can create a safer, stronger, and more informed community. When I think of Luke, I think of his smile, his laughter, and his future that should have been. Then I think of how many Lukes are out there right now, young people who may not realize the risks, who may not get a second chance. This is why I will not stop speaking. This is why Appalled exists. We believe in turning grief into purpose. We believe in education, awareness, and access to life-saving tools. We believe in leaving no one behind, and we believe that together we can change the course of this crisis. For Luke and for every loved one we've lost, thank you for listening and thank you for standing with us. I truly hope to see you September 5th at the Albany Public Library.
Counselors, do you have any questions or comments for Lydia? Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. I'm so sorry for your loss. I love your idea of, of having Narcan everywhere. I, I have it in the glove box of every vehicle I own. And, um, I would like to also encourage everyone to do the same. So thank you for putting that out there and I, I love that idea. Thank you.
Counselors? Well, I want to say thank you. Um, when you came up with me in my office, I wanted them to hear and the community to know you guys exist. Um, and so this is we, on our YouTube channel, so people will be able to see that. And I do plan to attend and support that event as well. But I do have Narcan in my car and unlike, like many other people, um, I, I'm sorry for your loss. I lost my brother to drug addiction and I lost a goddaughter to Nar, um, to fentanyl as well. So this is very important and I thank the work, thank you for the work you're doing and what you're going to do. Okay, I'll see you on the 5th.
Thank you.
Item five on the agenda, public comment is a, public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take comments or requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the same standard decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you, when you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany. Thor, sign up for this? Thor here? Sign up? Okay, I'll put you in there. I'll have you go last, okay? Uh, first on the, we have some public, excuse me, some written testimony from Julie Mather. Did everybody get a copy of that? Okay, good. Um, next is Jamie Perry, uh, in person. Didn't you speak with us before? Yes, she did.
Last council meeting. And I apologize in advance for how fast I'm about to talk.
No worries.
All right. Um, good evening, council members. My name is Jamie Perry, resident of Albany. I'm here to respectfully raise our ongoing concerns about the legality of photo radar enforcement in North Albany Road. I'm here to, I'm here in response to my last comments. A city representative emailed me and stated that the 1995 speed zone order is illegal because it references a statute for parks and obsolete signage requirements. Yet the order clearly designates a 20 mile per hour speed zone, um, for school zones when children are present, language that does align with 811105, a valid school zone statute unless formally rescinded. The city also noted that HB 2840 distinguishes enforceable signage, which is an accurate statement. The, that law limits when children are present to non-adjacent crosswalks, which is in conflict to the 1995 order. Their insight also clarified that North Albany Road is now a local roadway, placing full responsibility for school zone decisions on the city under section 7032 of ODOT Speed Zone Manual. That shift brings new obligations. Section 703 dot one outlines specific conditions that require further justification before posting or enforcing a school zone. North Albany Road actually meets three of these six minimum. A crosswalk at Northwest Thornton Lake Drive is signalized. The southern crosswalk is not adjacent to school grounds, and the school is set far back, partially fenced, and clearly lacks visible child activity. In other words, no entrance exit, no parks, no playgrounds. These triggers require more than statutory alignment. They demand a documented engineering rationale. The city stated the 1995 speed zone order is outdated and illegal. If that is their official position, then a formal engineering study should have been completed to determine this position. The city has confirmed no such study exists. Declaring the order invalid without the process bypasses the very safeguards meant to project our children and the legal integrity. Additionally, in response to Councilwoman Steph Newton's findings from last council meeting, I'd like to reflect on the follow-up from Deputy City Manager Caleb Barber Parada. I apologize if that's wrong. Um, while she did not cite a statute directly, she did directly quote 80, 810438, which governs photo radar and school zones. This section does require signs 100 to 1,400 yards from the radar unit. However, it also requires signage that indicates that the school is in session if no flashing light is present. The posted school days, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM sign does not meet that standard as it fails to confirm whether school is actually in session on any given day. This is compounded by statutory ambiguity. The city has never cited, cited a governing statute. Instead, it references 810438, HB 4019's amendments to 810444, and chatter around 8104437. This is confusing and there's even more to it than that. These statutes are not interchangeable. Each carries distinct mandates and governs different types of enforcement. The city is using fixed photo radar systems originally installed for red light enforcement to issue speeding citations. Uh, under HB 4109, that falls under 810444. That means, ah!
Thank you very much. Could you please write it in writing?
Yeah, I have it. Thank you.
Um, next is Ruthie Alexander.
Um, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Ruthie Alexander and I am a resident of Albany, Oregon. Um, I help lead a return to Eden ministries and I also work with a couple other ministries, Crown of Thrones Worship Ministry and Soup for the Soul. And, um, we spend our time down at the Simpson Park, helping out the homeless there. Um, sharing meals, we offer prayers, we listen to their struggles, and I even run a Bible study down there on Saturday evenings. I know the city has a difficult decision to make about Simpson Park, and I want to thank you for working on issues that impact both our broader community and our most vulnerable neighbors. But as someone who is in the park every week, I've seen firsthand the reality. People are not just camping, they're surviving. So I'd like to ask a few questions. What is the city's long-term plan for Simpson Park regarding the encampments? Will there be a balanced approach that considers public access, safety, and compassion for those who have nowhere else to go? What alternatives are being offered to people displaced from the park? Are we ensuring that when cleanups happen, individuals are connected to real services, not just pushed further into hiding? How can community groups like ours partner with the city? We're already providing food, support, and prayer. Can we work together to create and manage spaces, increase shelter capacity, or offer other transitional help? And finally, how will the city measure success? Can there be transparent updates on shelter capacity, cleanup efforts, and other outcomes for the people who are moved out of Simpson Park? I believe that together, the city and the community partners can do more than just cleanup. We can create a pathway to hope. And, um, I just want to thank you for your time. I think the cleanup that's going to happen, I think it's scheduled for September 16th. A lot of the people down there have a lot of fear and would like answers to some of these questions so that they know what's going to happen to them. And I can only look up what you guys say, so if there's more information that can be provided, that would be, um, really important to a lot of people that I have grown to really, truly care about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Executive Director of Downtown Association, Lisa Grado.
Good evening. Lisa Grado, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association. With a quick downtown update, uh, wanted to share our September newsletter that's already out. So, uh, we held our, honor Downtown Excellence in Albany Awards on Monday night and I'm going to share with you who the winners are. Thank you to those who attended and all the folks that maybe are online. Um, the evening began with a tribute to Russell W. Tripp. He's a former Albany mayor and one of the founders of the Downtown Association. Um, so we have introduced a legacy award in his name. Uh, the inaugural recipient was longtime volunteer and former downtown business owner Barbara Doolan. She was recognized for over fifty years of service and she continues to serve. Her family keeps her from coming downtown after dark to water plants when she feels that we have not watered them sufficiently. Um, that was noted and a headline was provided, but the family quickly took it away. Um, the Creative Placemaking Award was to the flower baskets that she selects the colors of each year. Outstanding promotional event went to the Lynn County, Oregon Veterans Day Parade and everything that Christine Ferguson has done to bring it back from the, uh, the brink of what COVID did to reverse parades and bringing it back to its own. Good Neighbor Award went to Ciberus for all that Matt Janelle Bennett do to, um, give back to our community. The Outdoor Award went to the Albany Visitors Association citing efforts to make, um, Albany more accessible and inclusive. Uh, they've installed an automatic door operator, um, have launched a fully accessible website, offer echrom glasses for colorblind visitors, and incorporate sign language interpretation in their promotional videos. So they've really done a lot. Uh, the Stand Up Volunteer went to Andon Martin. He's on our design committee, uh, is on our board and leads lots of projects you see downtown. Um, you, also the Business Renovation of the Year Award went to Ponable. They converted one of the spaces at the main auto body shop into a beautiful, lively space. And then the Bricks and Water Award, which is for historic preservation, went to Montith Square, also known as 401 Second Avenue Southwest. Um, that's the building across from Two Rivers Market where the roof fell in and they've revealed the beauty of that building. So, uh, Beverly Nakamoto was re, um, recognized for that. Uh, the Business of the Year went to Urban On First for all they do to bring people downtown. And the Business of the Year went to No Dinks. Uh, they have done so much for our community for the last thirty-five years, so we're very excited about that. So I'm going to come back next time and share the rest of September with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next is Randy Vogel. Is that correct?
Good evening. My name is Randy Vogel. I'm the Operations Manager and Owner at Sensible Rehab. And together, me and my wife, um, own the property and business directly adjacent to the proposed East Albany Town Center project. As you may recall, the city council has already approved a road, road alignment that would require a road to either go through or around my building. Back in April, I met with the proposed project developers. At that time, they said they wanted to figure out how we could explore and incorporate us into the development. And then I never heard a thing after that. I, until July 25th, when I received an offer, um, for around $92 a square foot, which if anyone is familiar with commercial real estate, is a ridiculous offer. Um, this was well below market value. Um, and more importantly, um, I, I think it's speaking to, like, their intentions behind some of it. Um, uh, the offer included no provisions for relocation costs, business disruption, any tax consequences, early loan termination fees, um, uh, or anything of the kind. Um, and then it went radio silent again after that, um, when I countered. So I'm willing to negotiate. I understand that you guys are moving forward with relocating my business. I'm willing to negotiate that. Um, I was fine in trying to, like, relocate within their development or whatever. Um, but I'm only willing to negotiate on something that's a make-whole offer. Um, and, uh, and then again, I, I know that you guys continue to approve the project, this project moving forward. Um, in June or January, you started the project, started moving it forward. Then in June, you approved additional annexations. I, I just want to say, I guess, in that June meeting, Matthew Rutger sat up here and he said that they've been making a lot of good faith out of their efforts to communicate with and engage in the community. And I have yet to talk to a single property owner surrounding this development that has heard from them. So I don't feel like that was a good faith, like, proposal of what has happened. Um, I, to my knowledge, I'm the only person that's been approached to it, about it. Um, and that's only because my property is directly affected. But there's other property, it has to be removed in order for their project to happen. My business has to go away or has to get relocated. Um, at this point in time, we serve about thirteen thousand kids in this community, or thirteen thousand patient visits in this community. And when we came into this community, there wasn't another op, option for medical care, for the services that we provide. So I urge you guys, as we continue to explore the exciting developments around a project in the future and something that Albany very much needs, which is access to affordable housing, that we consider, if we don't have adequate medical care, it doesn't matter how many houses we have. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next is Thor Haljusik. I got it.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Thor Haljusik. I'm a life, a life scout in 37100. I'm a resident of Albany. Uh, I'd like to propose, like, a possible, uh, project for, like, Parks and Rec and, like...
Pull it closer, please.
Okay.
Pull the, pull the mic closer.
I'll pull the mic closer. Um, a possible, like, Parks and Rec project or an Eagle Scout project for me. Uh, I'd like to build basically what's a bike repair station and a couple, like, possibly two parks in Albany. Or basically it'd be a, kind of like small metal pole with many cables running off of it with any tools that would be needed for basic bike repairs and also a little stand to basically set your bike upon and then see, that way you can work on it quickly and easily while in a park. Uh, I believe that the repair station would be able to handle things like tightening bolts, screws, and fixing flat tires. And it's just, that's pretty much it, I guess. I just want to look into building those in a couple of parks downtown, or not downtown, in town. Thank you.
And I will address it during business from the, my, my time. Okay? Okay, thank you, everyone that spoke. Does anybody in chambers like to address the council for three minutes? Please feel free to do so. Your mom will welcome to join us. Thank you. So next on tonight's agenda is action items, is ordinance, item A, ordinances amending Albany municipal code. Item A, ordinances amending Albany Municipal Code Title 11.01, Water System Rules and Regulations by Modifying Section 1101.225, Backflow Prevention Requirements. Scott LaRocque, pages 48 to 52 in your packet.
Good evening, council. Scott LaRocque, the Water Superintendent. So you have an ordinance amending the backflow prevention requirements of the municipal code in front of you. The changes are really just some clarification around how we define an auxiliary water supply. Most often, an auxiliary water supply would be defined as a well. That's the most common thing that we find out that somebody, a property owner, has. And the point behind the change is, really, it's not going to change the way we do our business or how we treat wells when we find them, when a property is also being served by the city water supply. It's just to make it more clear about what our intentions are. We've been treating wells the same that we have for decades, and that when there is a well on a property, and the property is also being served by the city water supply, we require a backflow device. The point of that is it's the best management practice for providing the best level of protection for the drinking water system, and that's the point of requiring that. So this just clarifies our intention. And this kind of resulted from a case where we were challenged on that interpretation, and this was a few years ago, where the individual brought that before council. Any other questions or comments, details?
Counsel questions?
Just having reading the report, so much of what we do really comes down to public safety and health and wellness. Yeah, I could see where someone might say, hey, the well's no longer operable and all that, but this is best practice, and let's put it in code what makes sense, and that's what this does.
Thank you, counselor. Any other counselor?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending AMC.
Well, I just had to read the title.
I'll need to read it first.
Yeah. Will the city attorney? Is anybody else, does anybody else have anything?
I'm just eager for it.
I know. But I have procedures I have to follow, so. Will the city attorney read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Title 11.01, Water System Rules and Regulations by Modifying Section 11.01.225, Backflow Prevention Requirements.
Will the city counselor, will the counselor like to make a motion to read the title, ordinance, second time in title only?
I'll move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. Any discussion? Will the counselor make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
We need it.
Let me read it.
Oh, read it again, please. Second time in title only.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code Title 11.01, Water System Rules and Regulations by Modifying Section 11.01.225, Backflow Prevention Requirements.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much. Your ordinance has been approved. Item seven in your agenda, informational briefings and staff reports. A, street capital projects and administrative costs. Director Bailey or Jen Ambeul? Director Bailey is here with us. Pages 53 to 54 in your packet.
And Jen. So you have both of us. In case there are questions, a smart person needs to answer, Jen is here.
As long as they're not about public works.
Right. We're good. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is in response to a question we received about how the city pays for street capital projects specifically, and are there overhead costs wrapped up into street capital projects? And so we decided to take the opportunity to answer a different question. It's a broader question about how the city manages capital projects in general. So when the city, well, a lot of times, people assume that capital projects are public works projects, and we definitely do the majority of the capital projects. But capital projects can be anything, whether you're buying a piece of capital equipment, or you might be doing large-scale repairs on the library, or building a fire station, it can be any department. So when we do a capital project, they are all managed the same way in the city, in that the costs associated with the capital project are assigned to that project, and that project pays for all of its costs, but it does not pay for overhead administrative costs. Capital projects are assigned unique identifiers in the city's financial system, and so I gave an example in the memo where there's a street project, it will be assigned a certain project accounting code, and all costs associated with that project are charged to that code. So we can go back and query for any of these projects by the code or by the name of the project, and find all of the costs and all of the phases associated with that project. The question of do capital projects pay for personnel costs can get a little bit, we can get down a rabbit hole pretty quickly, because there are, of course, people who work on capital projects, and that project has to pay for that work. So for instance, when an engineer is designing a street project, that engineer's time is paid for by that capital project through coding, through project accounting coding. So do capital projects pay for people? Yes. They're either going to pay for a city engineer, or you're going to pay for a consultant engineer, but somebody has to design that project, and so that's what gets paid. But what you won't find in capital budgets are the general central service overhead charges. Those are allocated to operating programs, so not capital programs. So I'm sure that's as clear as mud. If you have any questions about how those cost allocations happen, or what percentage of projects might be some phase or whatever, we can always answer those questions. How much typically is a street project paying in engineering, administrative, and legal fees? That's a category of codes that we can query, and we can find out what percentage that is. But you're not going to see something like a capital project paying for human, or human resources, or city council support, or other central service charges. Those are not allocated to capital programs.
It's just important to note that that staff time that's attached to that project is known as a direct cost rather than an indirect cost, because it's directly related to that capital project.
Thank you. Counselors, anything?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Director.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is public record request process. City Recorder Eric Glover.
Mr. Mayor, let me first mention that this is, at counsel's request, this presentation is being given. Eric, staff will provide an overview of how we respond to public records requests in general, and specifically, how we're dealing with the evolving area of text communications. The clerk or recorder manages the process, but it almost always involves staff from offices, other offices around the city, and the IT staff and the city attorney. So let me ask Eric to proceed.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as Peter indicated, this is a high-level summary of public records request process here at the city. For a little background, the state of Oregon has the public records law, which we follow. The spirit of the law is transparency. The state, in addition, establishes strong deadlines for the public records request process. Once received, they need to be acknowledged within five days, and then either closed out, or provided an estimate within 10 days. Here at the city of Albany, we utilize a decentralized public records process. That means that each department has a records manager who works with the city recorder and city attorney as needed to fulfill requests. For non-police and non-fire requests that are 30 minutes or less of staff time, generally the city provides these requests free of charge. Request comes into the city, it goes out to the relevant department. The department determines if they are the custodian of responsive records or not. If not, the request is closed out, and the requester is advised that the city does not have responsive records. If records exist, then the records manager determines how much staff time is necessary to locate and produce the records for the requester. If the time required is 30 minutes or less, then generally the records are provided to the Requestor for free, and the request is closed out. If the staff time required is more than 30 minutes, then the records manager provides an estimated cost to the Requestor. The Requestor pays the cost, and then the records are provided, and the request is closed out. For requests that come in that involve multiple departments, these requests are facilitated by the city recorder in conjunction with the relevant department's IT and the city Specifically, as it relates to text messages, at present, it is a very manual process. That was one thing that staff was working through the budget process this year, is the deployment of some technical software that'll make that process easier. That was approved during the budgeting process and is going through the, I guess, project process. Another class of requests that we may get is something like a subpoena. These more or less follow the same process. In these particular cases, we basically acknowledge it, we determine who has records, we gather the records, those are reviewed by the attorney, and then once they are consolidated after review, they are provided to the Requestor. Was there any questions?
Counsel, any questions, comments? Counsel McLeod?
Yeah. I'm not sure how to say this. I was really disappointed with the way the recent records request was handled, specifically, specifically text messages with the city attorney. Specifically, I received a copy of everything that was released, and the very first thing that I opened was text messages, and the very first text message was with the city attorney, and the very first line of the very first text message said, "Privileged question." And that privileged question was released. Additionally, my entire conversation with the city attorney was released. And that should not have been. And so I wanted to make that information known, that I'm disappointed in the way that was handled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is business from the council. I would like to start with Maryland's Counselor Smith.
Two things. On Monday, I testified at the Legislature before the Joint Interim Committee on Transportation Investment Funding, I believe that's the title, as part of a panel of city officials in favor of Legislative Concept 2, which is the transportation package that's the subject of the special legislative session that begins on Friday. Mayor Jim Tret of Detroit, Mayor Keith Wilson of Portland, and I all testified at that hearing. We were three of 155 people from across the state of Oregon who had signed up to speak. 60 people were able to do so in the three hours allotted for the hearing, and the others were asked to submit their materials in writing or come back on Friday, when there will be a second public hearing, to hear others. That was the first time in my very long life that I have testified at the Legislature. I've attended many sessions, I've covered it as a reporter, and so on, but that was my first experience in the hot seat. I prepared for days and days on end, and I want to thank the staff for giving me talking points and reviewing the drafts of my statement that I made. I also want to make it very clear that the statement, while I represented city-elected officials, I was there on behalf of the League of Oregon Cities and not representing opinions or feelings of the Albany City Council as a body. My second comment is the item that I wanted to thank the staff, and there are many of them, from almost every department, who accept the messages that I send them after I get the agenda packets. I go through the agenda packets as quickly as I can after we receive them on the Thursday before the council meetings, and I make notes. Sometimes I find words that are missing. Sometimes I find things that are confusing. Sometimes I just have general questions that I think other counselors might have, they might come up at a meeting, and I let the staff know I have this question, somebody else might ask it, can you be prepared with an answer? And I get an answer back, and that's helpful. I had, in this meeting in particular, this, not this meeting, but this packet, I had, I questioned the way some of my remarks that I had made at a previous work session were recorded, and Clerk Glover went through the recordings and found that my question was valid, and there were some changes made in the draft minutes and the ones that appeared in the agenda. So I know that staff find that helpful, to get questions like that ahead of time, and I do that, I've been doing that for as long as I've been on the council. And I really thank them for taking the time after they've worked so hard to put the agenda together, to listen to my, some of these messages I send are really long, and I get every question answered ahead of time. I appreciate their professionalism and their help. Thank you.
Counsel Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Just the last few days, volunteered at the Art and Air Festival, another successful event that was, even with the warm weather. On Monday, attended the Downtown Association Awards that were mentioned, that was a great event. And I kind of want to paraphrase a response I gave to a constituent on the whole issue of the FODAR radar. You know, I want to be clear, I'm supportive of these installations. This process began well before I came on council, and I think what's been lost recently has been the fact that that is the number-one complaint, speeding, that we get. Having said that, Counsel Newton and I went out to kind of delineate what a confusing set of descriptions the ORS is, and so I am supportive of it, but we have to comply with Oregon law. And I want to reiterate, another thing that Counsel Newton has kind of championed from the beginning was the flashing light to be added, especially on North Albany Road. So I'm supportive of that, but I just, I don't want to get away from the fact that I'm absolutely supportive. And so last weekend, last weekend, not in Albany, Oregon, I was visiting my folks in Vancouver, Washington, and we were T-boned. We clearly went through an intersection with a green light. Someone blew a red light, not a close red light, absolutely blew a red light, and T-boned us. We were in a terrible accident that wrecked both vehicles, completely totaled. Luckily, you know, years of, we were in a good-sized SUV, we kind of walked away, and I've got scrapes and bruises and sores, and so does my wife, and so does my daughter, but we walked away from it. But it just reiterates, I'm not putting blame, it just happens, these things happen, but we all need that reminder, and we do not have, there is no way we have, in this growing city, if you understand our budget, we could never put enough officers on traffic patrol to even come close to the kind of watch that we need to do. And so, please, as a neighbor, as a friend, people need to slow down, they need to watch red lights. And us, as a body, we need, when we do it, we have to follow what may be confusing, but we have to follow ORS, and that's all I ask for.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McGee?
Thank you. I have three things. One is that on Sunday, August 31st, from 4:00 to 6:00, at the Carvalis Community Center, the Lynn bin NAACP and the African-American Youth Leadership Council will be hosting their first first back-to-school dinner and supply event. So, if you are around and you want to come out, we would love to have you. It is in conjunction with the Department of Education, the Oregon Department of Education and Student Success. So, again, that is Sunday, August 31st, excuse me, I'm a little tired, y'all, August 31st, from 4:00 to 6:00. The second thing is, big thanks to Kim LaDain and the Parks and Rec crew, I had a great time on my hot air balloon. Me and Matt were out at 5:00 a.m. last Thursday, but we went up and we had a great time, and I am grateful we made it back on the ground, although that landing was something I wasn't prepared for. Still a little sore, but it's all good, and special thanks to the heavenly balloon team, they were really, really nice and so much. So, I had a first writer ceremony in which they presented me with a flight certificate, doused me with water, and sparkling cider, because some of them had to work afterward, so we couldn't have champagne. But it was really fun, so I had a great time. And lastly, a constituent reached out to me in regards to the 5:20 event space, they were just a little concerned, they felt that, their words, not mine, it was some sketchy things going on over there, or sketchy people in that area. I think it's a legit business, I haven't been inside, they do have a breakfast menu, so I might have to just roll on over there to see the event space and assure the constituent that this is a legit business and we are happy to have them here. I know that they're still raising money to complete the space, and I, oh, school is still out for me. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have a couple things about A-.
Oh, I thought you went already. I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
You were addressing something else, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I, well, I also attended the Northwest Art and Air Festival, both as a volunteer and a guest. I think I showed up four, five times throughout the two days, both volunteering and attending with my daughter, it was great. We stood in line for a tethered balloon ride, I don't know how Counselor McGee got a real flight, I'm jealous there, wish I could have done that. Did you, okay, okay, I'll have to reach out early next time, next time, but my daughter and I had a tethered flight, that was really fun. We loved the family fun zone there, so thank you to Parks and Recs for putting that on. I also attended the 2025 Excellence in Downtown Albany Awards. Congratulations to all the winners from that event, it was a beautiful evening, it was like the Oscars, it was gorgeous. So, congrats to everyone who won that night, and, let's see, procedurally, I just wanted to make sure the agenda did get approved as corrected. I think I had pulled that item, but then, but then we didn't vote to approve it as...
Correct, we'll bring it back.
As correct, okay, okay, great, thank you, thank you. And, yeah, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
I've been busy, but I'll keep the list short. I attended Art and Air Festival, KC and the Sunshine Band, the last time I saw them, I was in high school. But when he said KFC and the Sunshine Band, I literally spit my beer out, it was funny, it was a great concert, I seen people dancing all across the field in the concert area, and it was wonderful to see. It was a great concert, and a lot of people talking about it online. I do have a request, I know we have, do not have enough patrol officers, but today, one of my constituents brought to my attention that she passed 13 cars with expired tags on the way to my office. Her suggestion was, if we were to collect those fees, because they're probably uninsured because her car's not registered, either they get off the road, or we figure out a way to get those cars ticketed and find, and have them get that fixed. So, if that's just one 75-year-old lady that saw 13 cars, how many have we seen and not paid attention to it or reacted to it? Next, I want to thank Counsel Thompson, I met a lady named Lan Marbury, Marbury, and she said she spoke with you, and so, we met in the office, and so, we're kind of talking about things, so thank you for that. Bon Moi. And then, I was at the Oregon Mayor's Association Meeting, and our first-place winner, Ashme Larson, did such a great job, she got a standing ovation, and it was beautiful to see this, one of our young people again, winning first place with the state level for that competition. So, other mayors have reached out, and I want to say a shout-out to Matt Harrington and Kenzie, because I gave my talk before we did the presentation, I showed the coloring book, and they had a picture of my big giant head in there, and everybody loved it, and so, I gave a lot of my copies to the mayors that could take them back to the city. Thor is here to ask, requesting his support, and I did talk to the Parks and Rec Director, she's not available today or tomorrow, but she said, "Call her, leave her a message, and she'll reach out to you," so she can work with you, and she had a great, she was pretty excited about the project. So, that's perfect, great job. And what he's going to do is, I'll send the pictures to the council through the city clerk recorder, so we can see what he's talking about. And the East Albany Town Center, sir, Cricket's here as well, I haven't heard anything in months, so, you're not alone, but I will reach out to the principals that talked to us earlier on about it and try to get them to get ahold of you. And that's it, next, I'll go with the city manager's report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And with respect to public records request processes, I, as your manager, take responsibility for any lapses in those processes, and I have already explained those to you and apologized to each counselor, including to Counsel McLeod earlier. So, it's not really right for Eric to have to sit there and be the brunt of that, he manages the process, but that is, compliance with that process is my responsibility. So, we've put measures in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Let's see, there is nothing, you heard about, you heard a comment from the public about a cleanup schedule for Simpson Park, there is no cleanup schedule for Simpson Park that we know of. Our strategic planning session, you each have received an email from our deputy city manager, Kayla, and I would ask you to go ahead and fill out that request for your availability. And then, let's see here, I would ask Chris Bailey to come forward, our public works director, but as she comes up, I wanted to take a moment to remind counselors that questions or concerns about any of the city's activities or responsibilities, including specific traffic signage, can and should be submitted to the city manager's office ahead of meetings whenever possible. This practice allows staff time to gather accurate information, provide thorough responses, and ensure a productive, respectful discussion, without placing staff in a position to respond to unexpected inquiries from the DIES, and without creating false impressions among our citizens. Comments from the DIES at the last council meeting questioned the placement of signage on North Albany Road. Tonight, that issue will be addressed by Chris, and if more details required, by Stacy Bel Castro. And again, we encourage counselors to submit questions ahead of meetings, and we very much appreciate the effort to maintain a respectful and productive environment for all. And let me turn it over to Director Bailey.
There we go. So, a lot of talk about the signage on North Albany Road through the school zone. The current configuration of signs in that area is in compliance with state statute and ODOT guidance. We've checked with ODOT no less than six times on that question. The council has heard a lot of requests for flashing lights, and that would replace the time-bound signs that say the school zone, school speed limit is in effect on school days from 7:00 to 5:00, and would be replaced with a wind-flashing sign that has the two amber lights, and that seems like the council is generally in favor of that configuration. That type of sign is also an option under the statute, it is the other type of sign that is allowed in this type of school zone. So, if the council would like to direct us to replace the time-bound signs with the wind-flashing signs, then we can get started and do that. It's important to note that those signs will only be lit during school drop-off and release times, so the enforcement of the 20 mile-an-hour school zone, which is 20 miles-an-hour less than the underlying 40 mile-an-hour speed limit, will only happen during those times of day. The other thing is, and the reason why we want the direction from council is because these signs are going to cost upwards of $50,000, just the signs themselves will cost $50,000, and then there will be additional costs to entertie them with the radar system, so that the radar camera knows that the signs are flashing, and they're programmed together to work in sync when monitoring speeds. So, that's a lot of money, it's not in our current budget, we actually are going to ask the police department to pay for those signs, I don't know if Marcia knows that, I'm telling her that right now, because they are connected to the radar signs, and, as you know, our street fund is not in great shape. So, that's our plan, we would like a motion from the council to direct us to do that, if that's what you would like, so that we're clear and we can get started. The other thing I should tell you is, it's going to take months to get those signs. We haven't asked a supplier about those, but they are analogous to the RRFB signs, which are the pedestrian-activated flashing signs, and those typically take months to get delivered when we order them. So, school is starting next week, and as an interim measure, we're going to put out some optional little add-on signs that warn that the school's speed limit is in effect, that school is in session, and red flags or orange flags to try to draw attention to the school's speed zone and limit the impact. We might put a reader board out if we can find a place for it. So, we're going to do what we can to warn people, and, let's see, the only, the other thing that I want to mention is that, one of the reasons that flashing lights in the school zone are probably a preferable treatment to the time-bound signs, which is the city's standard everywhere in the city, is that the underlying speed limit here is 40 miles-an-hour. We will probably get a request, I'm just going to go ahead, for those people who live near the West Albany Memorial Middle School neighborhood and who also may want flashy lights, we would not recommend that there. That underlying speed zone is 25, so the change from 25 to 20 is not quite as abrupt and difficult and more prone to get a speeding ticket. So, flashing lights in school zones is not our preferred method, they're expensive, they're maintenance pigs, we don't like them. If they contribute to student safety and traffic safety, then definitely we should consider them, but most of the time when they've been requested, there has not been an obvious need, so this is not our preference. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions, or Stacy will answer questions.
Counselors? I'm going to tell my Arizona story. I've told this to a number of people already. I've said many times that people should just obey the law. The speed zone says this, drive that speed, or less, bother the people behind you, I don't care. The goal is safety, the goal is to follow the law and drive slow. My Arizona story is this, I was visiting a high school friend who had moved to Phoenix some years ago, she waited until she was in her late twenties to learn to drive, she had older brothers who could do that for her, up until they left home. So, she's driving me around rural, urban Phoenix on a hot summer day in July, and all of a sudden, boom, it's like we'd hit a wall, we're going 15 miles-an-hour, we'd been going 40, I suppose, before that, and I said, "What, what's the deal?" I looked around me, all the other cars on this four-lane road were doing 15 miles-an-hour. Robin told me that during her driving instruction, they had been taught, the speed limit in a school zone in Arizona is 15 miles-an-hour, and it still is, they had been taught to do 15 regardless of what day of the week it was, what season it was, whether school was in session or not, you're in a school zone, you go 15. It establishes a habit, and so, you don't even have to think about it, you see a school, you slow down. I wish drivers' instructors would do that here, but we all know that people are independent, and they don't necessarily like to follow the rules, but if you establish that habit on your own, you can do it, anything you do for 30 days will stick with you. So, there's my Arizona story, I wish people would follow the law. I'm okay with the flashing signs, I know they're expensive, and I know we must all be patient and wait for them, so I'm going to make the motion to go ahead.
Any comments?
I was ready to second.
We'll just check and make sure of the discussion.
I, I've made it known that I received a ticket at this intersection, and it was because I didn't realize it was a school day, I was going less than 40 miles-an-hour, and I still received a ticket. I thought I wasn't speeding, but apparently I was. I know there has been discussion about, in the community, about trying to have these tickets overturned somehow, and that would create an actual conflict of interest for me, and so, I will not be voting on anything related to this. So, I would not be able to vote on this item today. I would abstain. And I will...
Can I make a...
Yeah, I was just, my, I didn't have a comment, I was just going to refer to the city attorney to comment on that.
Yeah, Counsel McLeod, I think there are two different issues of the sign locations and whether they're enforceable or not, or just the flashing light. The flashing light signs, they're just going to change that sign out with a flashing light sign, instead of it saying 7:00 to 5:00, it's going to be flashing and saying 20 miles-an-hour wind lights flashing, that it doesn't have any effect on the legality of the signs themselves, so I don't think you would need to accuse yourself on voting for the flashing light sign, that's just more of a safety issue.
I'm very hesitant to be part of any vote related to this.
We'll have to, yeah, if you feel...
I would love for it to pass, I'm just afraid of a conflict of interest.
I mean, I can, my legal opinion, you don't have a conflict of interest here, because we're not, we're not going to be, I mean, there's no motions to refund tickets or overturn it, and it wouldn't have anything to do with a flashing light sign, if they were. But if you feel that you don't want to, we'll have to bring it back, because we only have four tonight, we'll need four to pass it, so we'll have to. It's up to you.
If it makes it cleaner, I'll withdraw my motion, I can count to four.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I want the council to be comfortable, but also, any perception of her being inappropriate, we don't want that.
Yeah, I wouldn't want any...
I understand.
Any illusions there, that there was any impropriety.
Thank you. So, what we bring in the back?
Okie-doke.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, so, with that, I will adjourn this meeting, so, excuse me, our next meeting is Monday, September 8th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m., work session. Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., for a standard meeting, and I will now adjourn the meeting at 7:24 p.m.